Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 4th. The time is 6:32 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome back. We made it. We were like, was, uh, I wasn't sure if we were gonna make it through or not. Um, first up is the consent agenda. Minutes from December 14th. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Read them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve the administrative. And then the next is warrants 35, 36, 38, and 39. Those are going around right now to be signed. I think those are, but those are right there.
Are we all signing this?
Yeah. Any questions or comments on the warrants? Does not have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 35, 36, 38, and 39.
Not a second?
No second.
All those in favor? Visitors' comments? I don't know. Sam, can you see? Can you put so he can see if there's any participants? I'll read through the board anyway. Um, "Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular section of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes." Do we have any visitor comments today? Give them a special minute.
All right. See, just to clarify, they don't need to sign in before anymore? We're not making them call in or anything?
Yeah, I was wondering about that. We've always had that verbiage updated, but I know Emery said we're supposed to read it every time we go through that. So I don't know if there's out there. It might be worth, um, you know, just checking to see if there's updated language in the Zoom world now. Thanks for that, Audrey.
Yep.
I think about that every time I say it, but I didn't, uh, I didn't ask about it.
Not that they couldn't reach out to Jackie ahead of time if they so chose to.
Right, but they may not know until.
Right.
That particular time or whatever. So we should just look and see if there could be something up out there. Um, so none. Okay. Uh, student representative report will be, um, the next time, like this isn't available. Is shell on? Okay. Uh, continuing business. Mask update.
So apparently there's no update. Had a couple of calls with the commissioners since we last met, but, um, he deferred that decision until the beginning of January. So, um, really don't have any indication as to whether or not he plans to continue it or not. Um, but we still do have an agreement to help that standard that would, um, go into effect with D E C with their support before next year.
And I can imagine that's not a Grammy thing, uh, unless there's any time to, with the numbers the way that they are. I do have a question though. Are we, I know we have our mask policy, um, but are we going to try to do anything where, you know, K-95 or N-95 or anything with a lot higher mask for teachers and students and staff? I mean, I don't know that we even have those or?
So we had a supply last week. We just got a supply of approximately six weeks worth for our staff, um, that's available to staff. We've had K-95s pretty much throughout that we've made available and some staff take advantage, some staff choose not to. But, um, in terms of a mandate, we have not had that discussion.
Okay. Any other questions or anything on masks? Okay, we are cruising. Um, next is new business. And first up is new COVID guidance from D E C and D P H.
Sam, we're promoting ABC drinks. As much as I try to handle these, as much as I can myself. Nancy talked on this one. So, um, last week, again, I think I can communicate the biggest piece of it, or at least in my opinion, the biggest piece of it. Um, D E C and Mass Department of Public Health provided new guidelines. And, um, essentially one of the major shifts in those guidelines was that the isolation period for, um, somebody who were to test positive with COVID-19 was reduced from 10 days to five days as long as their symptoms are improving. Not that their symptoms are gone, as long as their symptoms are improving. And, um, that they do not have a fever and have not been on any fever-reducing medicine. Um, at that point, they can return to either work or school as a teacher or student on day, um, on day six. So that's a big piece, but there's also some shifts to symptoms and things like that that Nancy can speak, um, speak to. If you don't mind Nancy.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can. Hi Nancy.
Hello. Sorry, it's already been a busy night. Um, so in terms of symptoms, um, folks can return to school after they did a negative PCR antigen test. Um, this is a change from the previous guidance. Um, and the antigen tested doesn't need to be proctored or performed by a healthcare provider, which is good. Um, so, um, the other thing to note is if the person's not deemed to close contact, um, a medical professional can also provide an alternative diagnosis for the COVID-like symptoms, such as if they're, they have the flu and maybe, you know, strep, um, in place of the PCR antigen test. And again, they can come back as long as they're feeling better and have been fever-free for 24 hours without taking medicine. Um, so that's kind of the big thing in terms of, um, symptomatics. Again, um, if they're symptomatic and they're a close contact, um, they still need to make sure that they're following the protocols, um, for close contacts and making sure that, um, they're, after their symptoms resolve and they have a negative PCR, that they're following, um, different things such as like the test and stay. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. If, um, folks choose not to be, um, tested for COVID and are not deemed as close contacts, um, they need to isolate for five days from the day their symptoms started. And then they can come back on day six as long as they're feeling better and have had no, um, fever for 24 hours without medicine. So just a little bit of a shift in guidance. Um, we are seeing issues where folks are having trouble, um, getting, um, PCRs. So, um, I think the state has kind of shifted this with the antigen testing to allow for that. Um, the other thing that is kind of a, a new or more recent change for us is anyone who, any student or staff member who reports to us that they have tested positive on a home test, we are now required to report that to the state through, um, the Crush the Curve, through our, um, test and stay program. So because, um, a lot of the home tests aren't reporting it to D P H, they're not aware that that folks are testing positive. So, um, a lot of what was going on over the last week and a half, we were seeing a lot of home tests, so I was reporting that to the state in that way. Um, and the Board of Health was getting those results. So they are at least able on their end too to help follow up with them.
The one question I have Nancy is, I think you just said that they need to have a negative antigen test. And I've heard some conflicting, um, information on that and that you could test positive with an antigen test for up to 90 days. And so I don't know that we're going to keep people out for 90 days. So I'm just worried about that, that verbiage and if you could clarify that for me? Cause I know other people have asked and, and been talking about that because I know that, I guess my biggest worry is that you have had it, you might still show as positive, even if you're feeling asymptomatic. So just, you know, clarification please.
Right. So basically anybody who has been COVID positive in the last 90 days, they can test positive for several weeks, um, after that initial COVID positive diagnosis on a, uh, antigen or PCR test. So one of the things that the state recommends is really, um, if they can avoid doing pool or test and stay, because they will test positive, they would be exempt under, um, like our close contacts. Um, however, if there's feeling like there's other symptoms popping up where they may be reinfected, that's when we're going to make a recommendation that they contact their healthcare provider for further evaluation and they will make the determination, okay, do they need to get another test or not? So that's normally, we've seen it in a couple cases and have made that referral. Um, but that is something that can pop up, um, in that situation, yes.
Okay, so I thought what you just said when you kicked this whole thing off is that students could return after being positive with a negative antigen test. So that's there, right there is a contradiction. If they've been positive, we're not going to allow that. I mean, we're not going to make them wait for 90 days. We're saying five days.
Um, I was talking about symptomatic individuals at that time.
All right, I guess I'm the only one that.
It's only if they're symptomatic still. Okay, so like after five days, if they're still symptomatic, they can take the PCR antigen and if that comes back negative, they can come back. But then if they are still symptomatic and their PCR antigen is saying they still have COVID, then they should seek their healthcare provider to see if there's something else going on like strep throat or something. It's so, yes, it is. It's all those things that you're feeling. It is, but if that's.
I'm gonna rewind this.
Exactly.
No, cause I'm, I'm confused on that too. Because if you're still symptomatic.
You wouldn't be coming back.
You wouldn't be coming back regardless. So if you would tested positive, I mean, I think the verbiage we were caught up with, it was said that you could test negative five days later, but people are testing positive for up to weeks after. Right, that's the, that's the confusion. I was confused when I read it too. So that anyone can digest that as well. I don't know.
I gotta, I gotta, I'm gonna rewind this meeting. Watch it again and I'll, I'll, uh, I'll clip it, like slip what it is that I'm talking about.
I feel like as long as they're not symptomatic anymore and it's past five days, they don't need to take that PCR antigen, correct?
So if they are, um, having, okay, so if they're having symptoms and they're not, they're not vaccinated or they are vaccinated and they're having symptoms, we ask that they go get a test or see their healthcare provider for further evaluation. If they have a negative test, as long as their symptoms have improved and they've been fever-free for 24 hours, they can come back. Or if they have an alternative diagnosis like the flu or, um, strep throat. So some folks, some folks may be symptomatic still after a COVID positive diagnosis and we don't require a negative PCR or antigen for them to come back because they can still test positive several weeks afterwards. Um, but the circumstances I was just talking about a couple minutes ago, that's for symptomatic individuals. We haven't talked about the COVID positive yet.
So there's the clarity right there. Thank you Nancy. I got, I got my brain off on that now. Sorry, that took a minute. So you were saying that was for, um, people that were not tested positive for COVID. That was for symptomatic?
Right, right, right. That's just for folks who have symptoms.
Gotcha. Okay, and following. So if you tested positive for COVID, we would not ask you to test again in five days because we'd still be likely positive.
Right.
Okay.
So for those who do test positive for COVID, and we are seeing both vaccinated and unvaccinated folks testing positive right now. So, um, right now COVID seems to like everybody. Um, after the fifth, after five days, so on the sixth day, as long as folks are fever-free and feel better, they can come out of quarantine, but they have to strictly mask for day six through 10 around others. Um, so that's a little bit of a change. Normally they'd have to quarantine in the past for 10 days. Uh, but now it's five, five days and then on day six, they can come back while strictly masking around others. Um, and again, they, they don't need a test to come back because they could be testing positive for a while. Um, and again, if they're not, if they're still having a fever or not feeling great, um, where they feel like they can't learn, they may need an extra day or two. So that day six may get extended depending on each individual person and how they're doing. Um, but again, that's, um, that's the guidance for that part.
One last question for me. If, um, if someone comes back on day six and they're strictly masked through the day 10, how at a school are we going to handle lunch and snack?
They're separated six feet. But they can still eat. The separation is just six feet.
So we're just gonna have that accommodation ready in the cafeteria for those students?
Cafeteria is right now, we're able to readjust lunch schedules. So everybody's six feet all the time.
Okay. That answers now.
There's, in the, um, you know, one of the updates is.
Yeah. So they have their snack in classrooms.
So even before break, they went back to all snacks in the cafeteria. Um, while we get through this surge.
Gotcha.
A little bit easier here, but the concept is the same next door. They added lunches here. Next door, it's a little trickier how they're having to do it. But here, everybody's six feet all the time. There, we don't have the space to do that, so they're having to move things.
Does anyone have any questions about the symptom, symptomatic or COVID positive at all before we move on?
I don't think so.
Okay. So for the close contacts, the exemptions are still the same, um, as before. So if folks are asymptomatic and fully vaccinated, um, classroom, uh, close contacts, as long as they're masked and at least three feet apart. Um, bus contacts, um, they should be masked based on the federal law, um, with the windows open. And then anybody who's had COVID-19 in the last 90 days, as long as, you know, they're out of their, um, the exposure happens out, you know, when they're done with their, um, recovery period and they have no symptoms. So the close contacts has shifted a little bit too, kind of like the, um, quarantining for the COVID positives. So, um, if they don't fit into that, that timeframe and they decide to do test and stay, test and stay has, um, for in-school close contacts only has gone from seven days to five. So as long as the kids are asymptomatic, they're wearing their masks all the time other than eating and drinking. And then, um, they take that, the binax now rapid test at school and they're negative and continue to have no symptoms, they can still be in school, but should be actively watching their symptoms for, um, through day 10. Um, and then isolating at home if, in quarantining if symptoms develop and getting tested. Um, so that's really kind of the change right now for that part of, um, in-school close contacts for test and stay. Um, we are also, um, offering if folks are vaccinated but are, you know, in consider close contacts in the school setting, per the, uh, Granby Board of Health request, we are offering test and stay to them as just an extra preventative precaution if they so choose. So that, um, option is available too. Um, that was ruled right prior to vacation by the Board of Health during, um, a large town meeting. Um, I think it was on the 22nd or 23rd. Um, in terms of traditional protocols where, um, families may choose not to do test and stay, um, they, the individual needs to quarantine for at least five days and they can come to school on day six as long as they have no symptoms and are actively watching for symptoms through day 10. And again, if they, um, develop anything to quarantine and get tested and then make sure that on day six through day 10, that they're strictly masking around others like those who are COVID positive. Um, so that's kind of a, again, a timeline shift compared to the previous guidance. Um, but again, um, you know, also recommending if you can test on day five or later, um, like we did in the previous guidance, um, that's also recommended as well just to make sure that, um, the individual isn't carrying the disease. Does anybody have any questions about that? I understand this is a lot of information. It is on our health services website and we've broken everything down by category, close contact, symptomatic and COVID positive. So folks can reference that as they need to and obviously reach out to us with any questions just because it is a lot of information to absorb.
My one question is, I'm just wondering if you know of where the best place to go be able to get, um, PCR tests? Because it seems like everyone I talk to, it's, um, kind of hard to get them. Is it, uh, is there some places that are better than others?
So right now we're hearing like HCC, Eastfield Mall and the Hoyle Mall, historically have been popular places to go. They have been quick in the past, but with the, um, current surge, it's been difficult. So if folks decide to go there, we are recommending they go at least an hour or so before they open to be able to get a slot because we know particularly like this, yesterday and this weekend, they were turning people away. Um, also folks can reference www.mass.gov/covid-19-testing. And in that, um, webpage, you can put in your zip code and it will tell you of all the local COVID testing sites in the area from, that the state has. So that's another possibility, um, as well to access, um, COVID testing.
Yeah, I was playing on that site just to see like if I, you know, if I needed to go and get a test. And the soonest test I could get within 30 miles was on the 15th of January. Today's the fourth. So, I mean, it just seems, that's kind of scary like.
Well, the people that, like she said, HCC and Eastfield Mall and those.
Eastfield Mall had the National Guard called in.
Correct.
You know, people were turning people away.
Right, otherwise it's all appointment only.
It'd be nice to know if there's another way that we could do some of that, you know?
You're talking about in-town?
Yeah, it's like Board of Health, if, if they could get a testing site to stand up in Granby because the CDC in Granby is overwhelmed. Um, just seems like, you know, we're having, we're having a problem. It would be nice if we could do that, especially, you know, something that was for the, for the kids in school and everything else, which is instead of having to wait two and a half weeks, by the time you get your test, you're already out of quarantine, so.
We are still doing pool testing this week and next week for all individuals who have consented. Um, we have actually just got our first pool back and there are some folks I'm going to be calling after I talk to you. Um, so that at least is a resource for those who are not experiencing symptoms, who want their kids tested. We're doing, um, you know, pool testing Monday through Wednesday this week and next week. The consent form, the paper form and the online part, uh, form, you can do one or the other, is on the health services website if parents just choose to do that. Um, as well as our test and stage option for those kids and staff identified as in-school close contact. So that's just another preventative way that families can have access to testing if they choose. And then we have our COVID vaccine clinic coming up on this Saturday, um, from eight to two in the East Meadow Gem. And we're doing online registration, um, now. So that link is also on the health services website for folks to sign up. And, um, you do not need to be a Granby resident or student to attend. It is open to anybody. Um, and once we find, um, you know, get the information from the CDC's final approval of the 12 and up boosters, I will be notifying everybody and those appointments will be made available to the community as well.
I don't know if CDC had COVID-19.
Yeah, like Massachusetts, like Department of Health too, like approved here and then like. That typically has been happening.
The AAs would be all in that.
Essentially they are, but it's like thirteen years and filtered down. One thing Nancy touched on that I just wanna like be really clear about that we in the Granby public schools are not drawing the distinction between vaccinated and unvaccinated. Students or staff, although the guidelines do draw that distinction, we've actually opened up opportunities for vaccinated students to participate in test and stay despite, um, the state like saying we should not be doing that. And now they have myself and Nancy on camera saying that. It's, it is, it's a challenge and I understand people have made their choices one way or another and I respect that, but we are not drawing that distinction. I want to be really clear about that.
Thank you Nancy.
You're very welcome. And again, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
I just wanna say thanks Nancy. I'm sure you're, uh, running in my oil with all of this and your hard work is not, uh, not noted, not going unnoticed and it's truly appreciated. Everyone on the administration and the district leadership, it's, these are unprecedented times and I didn't think I would have to say that, you know, twice in about two years, but here we go. It's just, uh, but thank you to everybody for all your hard work because I feel like we're in a lot better situation than, than some other places that I'm hearing about. And, um, it's just appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you Nancy.
All right. Next up is the district improvement plan.
What do you want to approve that from here? Do you want to?
You should be able to. Your panel, or I might not be able to.
Thank you. Some ways it feels nice to be talking about something like this.
I would say a little bit.
Um, so the district improvement plan is something, um, you know, really every district should have and it should inform the school improvement plans. I would say for the past few years, um, we have moved a little bit more of something we should maybe on the strategic plan. That's certainly something that we want to have in place as I've mentioned here before. Um, part of the process of the transition to be into this role, the entry plan will lead to an updated strategic plan. Um, but the leadership team did work on a district improvement plan this summer and I anticipate that the first February meeting, uh, the principals will be here presenting their school improvement plan. So, um, I'm gonna be clear, like, these aren't being created in January. They were created in July, August, September, but, um, you know, being with so much going on, this is just something that we haven't shared out publicly, although we did share it at the convocation with staff and it's been become an ongoing conversation, um, you know, certainly with the leadership team as well. So first, um, over the summer, we identified some core values and I won't read all of this, but, um, we talked about that we value that students come first and that there's no bad decisions when you make, think that a student at the forefront of your mind. Potential relationships, uh, they're built on mutual respect and collaboration and trust. Um, we want to communicate effectively and productively. We want to have a growth mindset. Um, I do think this line's important that we are focused on solutions, not problems that allow us to be better today than we were yesterday. Our failures and mistakes will not define us. What we learn from those failures and mistakes and the success that follows will define us. And I think that's really at the essence of having a growth mindset, right? That, um, you, we're all gonna make mistakes. It's not the mistakes that are gonna tell us who we are. It's what we learn from them and how we can improve based on that. And then we want to embrace differences. We want to be inclusive and equitable and we believe in every student's potential. Um, so really those core values, we feel like those are a set of principles and beliefs about how we treat each other, how we interact. It's not, you know, you're in trouble because you broke this rule. We really want people to start to internalize, um, these values. A theory of action is that in the Granby public schools, we believe that if we establish a district-wide culture that values academic and social emotional growth. And we consistently challenge students to think critically, take academic risks. And communicate effectively while promoting innovation and creativity through rigorous, engaging, standards-based. High-quality and student-centered instruction with individualized real-time support that is frequently monitored monitored and measured. To determine progress to our clearly defined goals, then all students. Will graduate with a competitive advantage and requisite skills to thrive in higher education and more than workforce. So we really try to get our priorities into, I I think when we're thinking about the district improvement plan, we're thinking about. Really a one-year plan, although I think you'll see that. Every district's improvement plan is probably ambitious for one year. There's going to be some carryover um based on that. But these are the four buckets we really tried to focus on as we. Develop um this this summer. So students, staff, social, emotional, physical well-being. Resource allocation, parent, family and community engagement and designing powerful learning experiences. I won't read through everything, but for each one, uh, like for this one, we have some student and staff priorities that we want. Students to be exposed to tier one SEO instruction regularly. I think that's something that. In July, I don't think we knew how important that was going to be this year. I think it's important every year, but we've seen over the past. Um, five months that it's especially important this year. And then, of course, staff, social, emotional, physical well-being as well. And then for each one of those buckets and priorities, we identified some action steps and outcomes, right? The action steps we intend. Are going to be the things that we're doing, right? The actions that we're taking over the course of both short and long term to ultimately. We believe to lead to those um defined outcomes. Another one is resource allocation, one of those that are second bucket and there are no particular order. Um, you know, I think this is one that. You know, when you think of resource allocation, obviously first you're probably thinking about the budget and things like that, but. Also looking at staffing and how staff are used and um materials that we're purchasing and curricula and. Um, things like that. And I think sometimes you realize as you do that review that. You know, you're allocating these resources. For something year over year over year that maybe you're not getting the outcomes that you want out of. Instead of maybe taking a step back and saying, all right, if we. Look at a different path, look at a different avenue, it might be more costly upfront, but it's going to provide a it's going to get us closer to those outcomes that we want to get. Um, you know, I think of many ways I think about some of the curricula that we have and. We've been using this curriculum and then, you know, you look at curate or ed report which rates these curriculum. Um, you know, and they're not highly rated, but we've had them and we keep using them. So. When is the point where we're going to say that? Our teachers deserve better, our students deserve better, and just because we have this in place and buying new curriculum is expensive, right? So like what are some opportunities that we can do that? Other grants for it? Are there other opportunities that we can pursue for that? So. When we think about resource allocation, it's not just about. Like getting a budget approved at town meeting, although that is part of it. Um, it's about all those other things and how they're connected. Character and community engagement. Um, you know, I think. We talked about that at these meetings and their subcommittee meetings. What does that look like? Can we identify and establish a plan that we're communicating this information? Um. And to something that Jen and you talked about quite a bit, like beyond our staff, our students and our families. Um, right? Those people you have these connections to, they're coming here, they're attending events here, but how do we think about going beyond that? Um, you know, educating the the community on the budget, having people like Tracy Novick, having those joint meetings, how can we continue to do those things? So. Right? And I and I think. For all of us here and Jen Miller too, I think it does. Sometimes feel frustrating, right? That we're putting this effort in and then. People don't come and things like that. But I think this is about how we continue to engage and engage in different ways and think creatively about ways to do that. Um, you know, and I think I anticipate and I'm confident that in the long run, our hard work. And it makes hard work that everybody here is putting in um will pay off. And I feel like, you know, how do you communicate that is is important. And then designing powerful learning experiences. This really comes down to curriculum, instruction, assessment. Um, and having systems around that and processes around that and how. What are we identifying for? You'll see on the next slide about what are going to be our focus standards? What are those high-level focus standards at a grade level that? Right? If we do a good job of identifying that focus standard and we pull on that lever, it's going to touch on multiple other pieces. Students are going to get. Information and opportunities to build those skills because we're we're identifying that specific standard. But we also know that there's all these through ways to other standards that connect to that. Um. You know, the standard-based instruction and then assessing that and then using that information to guide our next step. So. Right? We teach it, we assess it, we learn from the results and we go back. Again, that goes back to that core value that I talked about, that growth mindset that, right? I think many of us probably you think about school as like I did, I got this on this test and like that's what I got. Like that's. Who I was as a student in this class and. I think it's more nuanced than that, right? And we have to think of it as an evolution that, right? You're not a seventy because you got a seventy on this given day, but. You took in seventy percent of that information. How do I, my colleagues and your peers support you in getting an additional fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent? So that you're mastering it or exceeding it. And then systems to utilize that data, right? I think. Once we have this assessment, once we do the IXL, once we do the DIBELS. Okay, now we have this information. What are we doing with it now? Right? So. Right? And when you see, right? When it gets to that curriculum instruction, you see a lot of action steps and outcomes. Um. You know, and it is so nuanced to get there and the leadership team actually met today and we did our mid-year. Kind of check in on all of these and. We went through individually and took some notes on where we felt like we were making good progress, where are things that maybe we missed, where are things that? We can focus on in the next one, three, six months to get back on track. Um, and had some conversations about, yeah, when you set these goals and you set these priorities in. July and August, are they still are they still what we want to prioritize in January, February, March, April and those types of things and. Um, you know, like somewhat facetiously, I said, I'm happy to be talking about district improvement plan because like, to be honest, COVID does. Like grow the roost uh many days and it's tough. This is tough for teachers to do when. They're missing X number of students in their class or tough for students when they're missing a teacher or a pair in their class. So. Like how are we balancing all that? How are we weighing it? But also trying not to say like. This is it is what it is, wash our hands of it and just like. Get whatever the outcome is. We still need to work towards the intended outcomes and then figure out how we're supporting some of those needs along the way. Um, so I would say this is a somewhat simplified version. I think you'll see in the long run. Um, the strategic the a new strategic plan will develop, which will guide the district improvement plan. Which will guide school improvement plans that will be connected to. These priorities, these action steps and also um we haven't talked much about it here, but at the leadership team, we talked about it. Um, some of the accountability targets that the state puts out, which. I think those of us who work in schools know, like, those are good to have, but. They're challenging because we're doing this planning in. July and August, then I think the accountability targets for this year came out in the second week of December. So. You know, and the targets are basically accountability rating. You. Type in Granby Desi report card. That's what you're rated on. It's advanced coursework. It's achievement on the end cast. It's. Um, chronic absenteeism, it's growth on the end cast, those types of things. So looking at that data, identifying what the state has given us for targets and what are some of the steps that we can take to get there? And we feel that. Um, an improvement plan like this encapsulates a lot of that. We were broad enough, but specific enough um to be more targeted in our approach.
So one thing that you just said with the chronic absenteeism with COVID, like our numbers are going to be, and it's not to us, everyone.
Yep.
I'm surprised, like, are those targets adjusted?
Good. So.
I I just don't make a sharp left turn.
No, 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 not at all. So yes, they've been adjusted. So ironically, the state is using last year as the baseline data now. So the data from last year, which. In some ways I anticipate could hurt us because attendance was. Up and down and over and you were remote, so you were present, you were up, right? So it makes this challenge, but the state has recognized. I mentioned um growth on the test. So they're still growing the student growth percentages and they did it for this year. But they're heavily, they're strongly urging us to say, don't compare yourself to Beltray Town or Self-Having, or even your year prior based on this. Use this to see how that student, that individual student is growing because the numbers. I anticipate we'll start to see some change in the chronic absenteeism. Um, that has not been realized as much as I thought it would be by by now. Um, I think our attendance has been. Good, but. You get a week like this week where I'll talk about it. We had forty-five cases when I sent out the report on Monday. That's students and staff, but that's that's a big number to start with, not to mention kids who, you know, were out because.
There's other colds out there too. There's other colds and sicknesses.
A cold. Um.
Or they're in isolation.
They're in isolation. They're right. They were on vacation. They left on Wednesday night, so they missed Thursday and Friday. That's right. So there's all these reasons that happen in any school year. Composited by the fact that you have these isolation times. So. It's something that I know superintendents across the state are asking those questions like. How are we going to be rated on this? So last year, what Desi did was they didn't change anybody's accountability rating. You still got this. But your like ratings weren't changed, but you still got the information in a way that you could use it. But that I don't know that that will happen again this year, but that's what they did last year.
And then one question, because we touched on it, um, is for absenteeism. Is it? So how is it like it? It was at one point if you reached, you know, so many absences, then you needed to make up the work or do like the recovery.
Yep.
But now if you're out for five days now, which is essentially a whole week. You can make up that work and the absences are not necessarily wiped away, but the work counts. Like, can you just kind of touch on that since we're talking about?
Internally, in especially at the junior senior high school, uh, we created a. Two or three years ago, we created an application for attendance recovery. At a certain day, after day five, if you were out. You could fill out this essentially an application to your teachers. Your teachers would list the work, what you had to do. Student would go back, do it. Sometimes the teacher would say, you need to complete. This reading and then meet with me after school by this date. If the student did it, the teacher signed off on it. Had to go through the assistant principal, they signed off on it, and then those students were coded as AR, attendance recovery. When that got pulled to the state, it pulled to the state as present. So our students are getting credit. So that was a strategy that would have been placed to say. That our teachers are doing extra work, our students are doing the work that they need, our teachers are saying they've done a sufficient amount of work to make up for that. Like forty-nine minute class that they missed. Why aren't we giving them credit? Because. Prior to that, many districts were saying, oh, we'll just excuse that absence. It was for good reason. But the state has been clear that. They don't care if you're skipping school to go hang out at the beach or if you're sick at home with the flu, they look at it the same way. Whether we excuse it or not locally, the state is saying absent is absent and. Chronic absenteeism is is defined as ten percent of the school year. So it's eighteen days. Um, for a student who's enrolled for the whole hundred eighty days. But you end up getting some students who come in, they're enrolled for thirty days, they only show up for. Ten, so. Like they've been absent sixty-seven percent of the time that they've been with you, they withdraw and they go to Springfield. They they're considered chronically absent, so that counts against you too. So there's always plenty of moves to jump to. Uh. Yeah. So this is some and something that we've been working with. Um, I think we'll see in a couple of weeks how the schools have internalized it for them and. But like I said, I mean, I think we all thought we'd be in a different place when in July. Um, I think at that point, we weren't even thinking we got masks on.
Yeah, remember the little face?
Yeah, so um really trying to adjust with the times, but also saying that. We want to hold to this. These are priorities that we we use data to identify. We. Had lots of good conversations about and we don't want to just move away from them because of circumstances, but also know if we're. Being realistic, the circumstances haven't been that good.
Any other questions on the improvement plan? Comments? All right. Thank you for that. You're up again for the superintendent report.
And then over the fifth month superintendent report. Um, I don't know if Stacy is on there, but if she is, we might.
She is.
Stacy could show us on there. Can you promote her? So as far as superintendent plan, superintendent report this month, I'm gonna just touch on the enrollment dashboard. Um, with everything going on, we weren't sure where we'd be with it, but Stacy um. Through minor miracle was able to get it um finalized. So I just, I know we've said the first meeting each month, so I did want to make sure that it was being shared. Um, you know, I hope you'll see the big takeaway that people are probably going to first notice we're up six students from when we last talked about this in October. Um, in in October, we're at seven hundred and eight. Um, we had five students come into the district. Four students come into the district in November and none leave, and then we have three come in in December and we have one withdrawn. Um.
Did they change the filtering?
No, I can't find it.
Oh, it just.
Top.
You have to like, it first pops up blank and you have to type something. Seven fourteen, correct?
Seven fourteen.
For December.
End of December, you know.
So you want it to be on all, all of them. So like October reminds more than February, she's put it on.
Right.
I'm gonna get it.
They're not totally one of them. I can just click on the screen.
Let's uh, it says resident now. Oh, I just have to click on the screen. I got it. Oh, very good. Gotcha, gotcha. All right.
So we've really been in the same ballpark pretty much all year, right? Like that big shift, June, July, we saw a little bit, but it's been. Pulling a couple out.
As I look at it though, so I don't know why my October says that six oh six.
Because it's not good. You have to check all.
Yes, you know.
It's sure one of three.
You probably missed.
No, but how do I get it all? Just you put on the and the little green label at the top that says October.
Yeah, click our check mark. Do a check mark for all of them.
Seven oh eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like.
When I was reading it as six something, I was like, oh gosh, is that the number? October is when we report out to the state. So I was having a moment of like, wait. Hang on.
So the monthly withdrawal breakdown is a grade five student?
Just one in December yet. So there is nobody who withdrew in November.
I thought it was going to be a different grade level. Or it was not due in December. Gotcha. Okay.
All right. Any other um questions on the report?
Any other questions on the report? I really do love this thing, I have to say.
So Stacy's on, so if you have questions or a parent or I...
So are these December tuitioned? Those are new for this month, correct? The December, the resident non-enrollment tuition enrollment?
Those are just, they're two months.
Those are the constant.
That's just new in, December, they're...
That's a constant number?
Right, right, as long as they stay with us, that is a constant number.
Okay.
I think it's just the way that we're trying to show that they're always there.
Okay, sounds like it'd be a coincidence to say that, but I just want to make sure. Because the last time I...
I think, by and of being, we're tuitioning two students in every month. So I did want to make sure I got that to you guys this month. So, if there's questions, obviously we can talk about it at our next meeting too, but I did want to make sure. First meeting too. And December rolls in checks.
Is that anyone else's October enrollment thing, like scrolling down?
It's supposed to have to click out of it.
Oh.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
Why is it moving on?
Well, I think this is great, it's nice, consistent. Chart, so it's pretty, it's a pretty easy read.
Any other questions on the enrollment? All right, well, we can continue with your report then.
All right, so I want to thank the leadership team especially. Around last week, I think the holiday break. It turned out to be less than a break as of Wednesday or so. That's when the commissioner announced the new guidelines. And I, I do believe that Desi had really good intentions with that. The plan was originally district would be to pick up testing kits on, as of Friday morning. So I think myself and many other superintendents scrambled to make times available to our staff to pick up test kits on Friday afternoon, Saturday, Sunday, whatever we needed to do so we could add this other preventative, should people want it? And that plan changed from Desi about nine-thirty on Thursday night. They found out, if you watch the news, the same thing happened in Connecticut, that the vendor, former pharmacist, had under-delivered. And, you know, Desi was expecting over two hundred thousand testing kits and did not end up with anywhere near that. So they were able to scramble, you know, in some ways unfortunate, they're scalable like two, and I appreciate Adam was willing to, on New Year's Day, drive out to Franklin to pick up test kits for the district. We offered test kits, the leadership team was great, they made themselves available. And Cheryl, the net, and some other teachers reached out, were willing to help distribute that on Friday and Sunday, when we originally planned it. In the end, we only did distribution on Sunday morning. And we were able to give out a hundred tests, about a hundred test kits and over five hundred masks from nine AM to twelve PM. And Friday morning, basically staff drove through and we got them to them. And again, it was something that was not given an option that we had as of Tuesday. So despite the ups and downs and changes of plans, I was happy that we were able to offer that to our staff. Those staff who wanted it, it was voluntary. And staff have been thankful, they've been really great about it. And it's, it was a nice way to just at least say, like, we have this other, two other preventative measures on top of some of the other things that we're doing to, you know, keep people safe, make people feel safe, all those things. And I think we all know for people's peace of mind, that's, that's really important. So thank you to everybody for their willingness to help out. And basically, New Year's Eve until January second, it was, it was truly a team effort. If you want to note, right, I sent out the COVID notification yesterday afternoon. It was our highest number total. And we had, we announced forty-five cases, thirty-three of them at the junior senior high school, twelve at East Meadow. That includes staff that, and students. And, you know, in, in some ways, I think it is what's happening everywhere. In some ways, I think it is also a testament to the work that schools have been doing, not just in Grandview, but everywhere. I think the week then, when everybody's away and fit, like, that's when we're seeing some of the biggest numbers in terms of our school community, less mask wearing, less distancing, more sleepovers, more hanging out. And that's, like, socializing, that's important for our kids to do and parents to be able to do. I completely, and that's not a knock on anyone, but I do think, you know, it's not coincidental that we saw some of our highest case numbers in a week where schools were not in session. And I think, again, it's a testament to the work that Nancy and her team, the teachers, the custodial staff, the leadership team, that everybody's doing. So again, I just wanted, it's not great news that we have that many cases, but I also think, you know, it, it's something that I've been thinking about. Fun update, everybody, you know, I sent the school committee a couple different updates over the holiday break. My intent is send one on Tuesday night and it ended up being probably six by the time we were done. But another update on athletics, we have put our, our home athletics, the athletics that we own on pause until this Thursday. We kind of shut down for four or five days last week. Started ramping back up Sunday and Monday, assessed the situation and took another step back until Thursday. So things are postponed, we're not canceling at this point. Again, these are steps that we're taking that people might not all be in favor of or support, but we're taking them so that our student athletes can finish the season and continue through. And it is sometimes, it's been an abundance of caution where we might have been able to get away with the game, but our hope is that by doing this, we can prevent, like, a bi- a bigger outbreak amongst student athletes and, and just students in general. So we're planning now is to kind of get back up and running Thursday, but Ally and Brittany are assessing the situation daily, keeping me up to date. They're in contact with the athletic directors in Hoyo and so Hadley, who we have co-ops with. And I think they've done a really nice job handling, handling the situation. And again, our hope is that this allows our teams to finish the season and healthy and in the safest way possible. Right there, Nancy mentioned it before, vaccination clinic this Saturday, January eighth, from eight to two in the East Meadow gym. You can sign up, you can go to the student health services page, you can sign up there. You can reach out to Nancy, you can reach out to me, we'll get you in touch if you're interested in a vaccination. We will be sure to get you in touch with the right people. And that will be this Saturday here in the East Meadow gym. So appreciate Nancy's work and working with Purple Shield again to provide that. Something that we put out in the past two notifications that I know there's been some questions and maybe some people, you know, don't love the idea of testings day, but late December, I think December seventeenth I have here, the CDC actually published a report supporting testings days. And that's not just in Massachusetts, but throughout the United States. They're, you know, they're not seeing, in schools that have testings day programs, you're not seeing an increase of cases compared to other schools. And they're allowing, it's allowing students and staff to stay in school and continue to monitor their health. And, you know, I think the governor said last week, the commissioner said last week too, that in Massachusetts, it saved about four hundred and fifty thousand days of school for students across the Commonwealth. And I think one thing you learned last year is how important it was to have kids in school for a variety of reasons. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention is here at East Meadow, we're going to move forward with an SEL curriculum, second step. Some of you probably know about it. You know, peacebuilders have been in play for the past few years. And, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had a cohesive approach to social emotional learning for students' grades K through six, K through, yeah, K through six. So it has been, we've realized some challenges this year, certainly. And second step is evidence-based. We also have a social emotional learning team of teachers who have been working on a plan here at East Meadow since the summer. And the plan from the summer was really to allow that team to, to plan, not implement this year, to pilot some things in their own classes. So this allows them to do that while, you know, we hope providing everybody a more cohesive approach to social emotional learning.
So peacebuilders going away then?
Peacebuilders, there's still new components of peacebuilders. But this provides more of a curriculum that teachers can use. We feel like they have some less, it's not as much on them in terms of having to plan things, it's...
It comes as a kit.
What's that?
It's a kit, like each grade has a kit.
Yeah, it's a digital one, but it's, yeah, essentially like a kit that they can use. So common language, common understanding amongst staff and students.
Excellent.
And that's all I have, I know that was a lot, thank you for...
Any questions or anything for Stephen on his report? Okay, Adam, you're up.
Okay, I've got a few little things here. One, an update or not update, I would like to make sure I get you guys up to date on that since the summer, which is crazy. Um, there's a few small odds and ends that we are trying to clean up.
Fascinating, right?
I know, so there's been some confusion, miscommunication with the vendor, but we're, we're almost there. Again, we haven't made, it's not complete yet, but I've been keeping you guys up to date a little more, so I just wanted to keep, keep that going. We did, over the break, simulate a power outage. We had a power outage weeks ago, we had some problems. So over the break, we simulated a power outage and had no major issues. That doesn't mean that if we have another power outage by a car accident or a storm, that we won't face any issues. But it would give us a, you know, a good indication if there's anything major going on. So no major issues, we did that over the break, so that's good thing. And lastly, our SR three application has been held up because of the whole procurement policy. I'm trying to get in touch with the state to have a conversation with them to see exactly what they need from us and or the town to move the application forward. So I'm just waiting to hear back from them and as soon as I do, I'll call them and update you guys. So I have...
Any questions?
Yes.
No? I'm done. I don't believe you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Uh, we may meet this month, but we haven't met yet for CS.
Right. Anything else? Um, we didn't add anything to the agenda for next time that I can see in my notes. Did I miss something, anything?
I'll do a little bit of capacity, clear it up.
So... We'll pass these meeting on the twelfth. So the next meeting is the fourteenth, I think? H T?
Eighteen.
So can we add that to the, like, hour and discussions of us coming to U ball? I don't know that we'll be prepared, I mean...
No, but you could just give us a...
Maybe, maybe something, not necessarily like a full...
Just, you know, you can maybe come, give us some dates and when you, or some time when you, just, you know, just so we can keep people kind of in the loop would be great.
Yeah.
And if you decide that you think you might be ready for the eighteenth, we have until...
The thirteenth, right?
The thirteenth to...
We'll have to discuss that, like, okay, will we be ready? Well, it depends on what comes out on the twelfth, like, but we are looking forward to coming and kind of really sharing out every...
So if we can't do the eighteenth, could we put it on your radar to try to be ready for the first? Try to refer to the meeting after that?
That's our next meeting after that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great.
Hopefully, yeah.
Um, anything else for, any, anything? It's saying nothing else, seven thirty-seven. Can we actually have a motion to adjourn?
Was that that?
Yeah, that's right.
A second?
I wasn't there.